At six thirty, so tonight we have two special guests who are here to provide some valuable insight on the work process. We're joined by Election Commission Chairman George Satcher and Elections Office Manager Sharon Fortune. He will walk us through the process, timing, and requirements involved in changing elected city positions to appointed through local ballot question in a city election. So by way of reminder, as Mayor DeSimone had explained several months ago here in the council when she addressed the council, one way to change elected to appointed positions is currently provided for in our charter is to have the legislature approve a change to the charter via a special act. I've been working closely with the city solicitor Peter Mello and Sharon, who have been in direct communication with the legal counsel for the state's election division to ensure that we fully understand the legal framework and procedural steps involved as it relates to the special act. So with that background in mind, I'll turn it over to Attorney Satcher.
Well, between Sharon and I, we'll explain what we've gone through. Sharon's had even more background with this because he's met regularly with you, Jonathan, and Peter Mello, city solicitor, to talk about the what ifs and so forth. And if you'd like to recap that, then we can talk about what our board voted to recommend today. But start with the process that you went through to get to where we are now.
Okay, so essentially, so we're looking to do this as a special act. So what's involved here is if it's voted through city council, if you get a two thirds vote, then it would be delivered by, I'm guessing, Representative Hawkins. He would bring it to the State House. They would go from there, they would review it. I think they take four weeks at the attorney generals, make sure that it's all good and legal. Then it gets, goes through the normal legislative process. And I don't know how long that could take, it really, it's gonna vary. So after that, we need to know thirty-five days before the November fourth election that it's all set and ready to go to put the question on the ballot. That's the tricky part because we're closing in, I don't know how long this is gonna take. And we typically would have the ballots printed by then because we have to get the vote by mail out. So we're, you know, clock is ticking on that part. So if you have any questions or?
Well, let me, let me, let me explain the alternatives that we brainstormed, but Peter Mello and I guess Michelle Tassanari at the Secretary of the Commo's office guided us through. We cannot put this referendum on a state ballot if we waited till next year. We could have a municipal ballot with the state ballot at a state election. But of course, we do have that extra expense and that can create voter confusion. The other alternative which some, I'm sorry, yes?
Excuse me, can you explain to me, does that mean two separate pieces of paper?
Exactly, two separate ballots, that's right.
Into voter lists.
So that's not a good thing if we can avoid it, in our opinion. The other alternative, of course, was a special election, which I think Holyoke did, had a very low voter turnout. What do we estimate, thirty to forty thousand for a?
They have, yeah, they have, it costs them thirty thousand dollars for the special election. They have over thirty thousand registered voters and their turnout was eight hundred and forty-three. So, sorry, expensive, yeah, and our elections generally run forty thousand and up because we're a bigger community.
So that didn't sound like a good way to do it. And, and it can't be on a preliminary ballot if we should need one this year, we don't know yet. So the ultimate alternative is to put it on, can be read on the ballot for this fall's election if the timing works out. And it's all on one ballot. Now, obviously, there's got to be a good explanation so that people realize, hey, I just voted for a treasurer and a collector on, up here, and now down here I'm going to be appointing them. So there's got to be a lot of PR done as well as explanations on the ballot to do that. Now, we as a board had a meeting today and discussed this. And as I say, Sharon and Peter Mello have worked on this for some time now. And the, the best recommendation that we've made as a board and voted is put the referendum on this fall's municipal ballot, as long as the timing works out, and that's what we're hoping. And then, then we're saving the expense of a separate election, we're saving the confusion of a separate ballot next year with a state election. And we can get the, we can get the job done if that's what you folks decide you want to do. We feel that's the best mechanism to accomplish it ballot-wise and vote-wise.
So you mentioned the confusion of two separate ballots. How do you plan to navigate the confusion of having it on the municipal ballot when they're gonna be electing those positions as it is? So I guess, how does your board plan to kind of help navigate?
I think some of that is beyond our office to educate the public as to what's coming. You know, social media, maybe a mailing, whatever might be mine, that's beyond us. On the ballot, I think, we've got to have a clear explanation so that people realize, if they haven't seen or heard anything else, and they get to the polls of the ballot, they realize, why am I voting down here to appoint these people when I've just voted them above? So, yeah, it's, it's, it takes some work. And some of it is on our path and some of it is beyond the scope of our department. Yes?
Hi, I wondered, we're talking about putting it on this November ballot, but then also electing the people. So then, when does the timing happen of them being appointed versus elected? Does that mean that they have the two years of elected and then?
Yes, yeah, so they'll finish the term whomever is elected and then it would be up for appointment January twenty-eight. So it would be spelled out, the city solicitor would have to make a really clear question on the ballot to inform the voters. And then as far as informing voters, you know, you could send out an information to voters like they did ahead of the state election, but that, you know, you're looking at twenty thousand dollars. You know, you could put it on the city's website and socials to inform the voters. But it would be clearly spelled out, you know, upon, you know, I already have some wording here, but basically, following voter approval, it would take effect January twenty-twenty-eight. So they would still be voting somebody into office at this point.
Now, if a vacancy should, should occur midterm to this next elected term, then to replace that office, it would then go to the appointed position rather than having a special election or anything. Then you would just, then the appointed capacity would commence at that point.
Thank you. So the only way to get it on the ballot is to do the special act. The council has to vote a special act saying we do want it to go on a ballot. Because that's the only way to get it on the?
If you folks vote to, to this resolution, to put it as a binding referendum on, on the, on the ballot.
So it doesn't mean that the council agrees with this, it just means the council is willing to put it on the ballot?
Correct.
I guess technically that's right, yeah, that you want the people to decide.
Okay, and so, so that, that's the only way to get it on the ballot, that's procedurally?
Well, for, for this November ballot, yeah. If none of this was going on, it could be like a petition process and, and a whole, you'd have to, what is it, the committee? That we'd have to elect nine people to charter commission, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it would be a different room.
That's a whole protracted, long event.
A long go.
And then eventually would end up on the ballot.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So, again, the council is just voting to put it on the ballot through a special act and then it goes to the body. But that is a very long process. I mean, when we voted to change council, councilman to councillor, it took like six years before the state, I mean, like, this is a very long process.
And I think that some of that was COVID. I, I did see Holyoke had submitted their proposed act in September and it was approved in December of twenty-four. But, but I think it's because they detailed, they wanted a January twenty eighth special election and it was probably the end of the year too, so they were just getting it done. But I'm told it shouldn't take years, but, yeah, but I'm just have no control.
Months rather than years.
Yeah, is the whole.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I guess if, if you folks decide to act now, I guess there is time to make it happen for the November ballot. So, so timing is an issue that we want to make, want, want you to be aware of. But, but we feel it could be done if, if it happens now, but that's, that's your call.
Okay, thank you.
Does the thirty? Give me one second, Nick, sorry.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I just wanted to make the comment, so the reason that this conversation is happening is because we're, we're presuming that this would be subject to voter approval, which is not necessarily a requirement. But if, if members recall from previous committee meetings, that's likely something that I think that the council is gonna want to see in, in a ballot question. And so that's the reason why we're even talking about this, so I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, that, and that's the scenario that our city solicitor has outlined, that it would start with, with a council vote and then it would go to the attorney general, I think.
Yep, after committee votes it out, council votes it out, it would go to the attorney general for review.
And then it would go to the legislature.
Yep, the normal legislative process.
And then ultimately back here to go on a ballot. So that's the scenario that he has laid out under this procedure. As we've said, the more than one way to do this, but this is, I guess, the most expedient way that it could happen if that's what you decide to do.
And so that thirty-five days before the November election, does that include time to make the ballots? Or is that solely just for like the mail-in vote process?
So that's when we have to be notified that we're putting the question on the ballot. So that's September thirtieth, if I have figured correctly. Typically, I would have ordered, I would order them a week before that, so I'm hoping, you know, but like immediately following the ballot position lottery, September twenty-fourth is when I would like to order the ballots to get out vote by mail. But, you know, we'll see what happens.
So one other question that I previously had, previously had that, that I talked to Peter and Sharon about was, well, and this was one of the first questions I raised with Peter, is, is there anything preventing us from sort of gathering everything together to put the question on the ballot while we submit the, the question to the legislature to get the special act approved? And, and that's contingent on the legislature approving the, the special act. So it's, procedurally, that's, that's sort of the next step and we have to sort of pass that. So we can't really do anything until we pass go in that sense to even prepare for, for the election as it relates to the ballot question. Feel free to mention any other details if there's something.
No, that's exactly what he says.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, I do like what you're thinking about those. So we, we would not have an opportunity to see the actual question, you're saying?
Well, more so we wouldn't have time to necessarily prepare anything officially. So it would all be contingent on the special act being, being approved. So, so we wouldn't be able to, so for example, if, if the legislature didn't act on this, but we planned to move ahead with the, with the ballot question anyway, it, it just wouldn't happen, so.
I think, I think that much of the language that would go into the legislative act would be what you draw from to put the question on the ballot.
Okay.
So.
Counsel LeBoye?
Thank you. Now, is the idea to put both of these as one question, both positions, or are there gonna be two separate questions per position? I don't know if we've even kind of discussed it as a body, but the thought came into my head that maybe the general public may think that one over the other should be appointed. So I'm not even sure if it's possible to break them up, if it's been done, but maybe something to look into.
Well, for, we understand that they both would be in the legislative act that we would present to the legislature, two separate line items. And of course, the legislature can do what they want with it. Now, as far as what you folks decide to do with the question on the ballot, I suppose that's another matter, whether you do it, whether you folks do it as two line items on the ballot rather than combined. I think that's a procedural question that you could determine right here. That would be my opinion.
Yeah, we discussed that briefly when I met with the city solicitor, that one might feel one way about one and one of the other. And, and it comes down to the city solicitor at, at the end of all this to draw a, a really concise ballot question or questions. So that's something that could be dealt with. And then as far as the resolution goes, as much detail as possible so they can't, you know, change things around.
Yeah.
As much as possible, yeah.
Any other questions with speakers? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to the decision.
Thank you, George. So one, one other thing that's going on now is Peter, as George alluded to, Peter is actually working on proposing some additional language to the resolution to send up to the legislature, should we want to go down that route, to be able to, to put this on the, on the ballot for, for this November and be as flexible as possible with the language to give us a lot of discretion about how we might want to handle various aspects of this. So that is something that, that Peter is working on, so. But my intention for today was to simply have that discussion from the, the election office and, and think about it through, through that lens. And I, I know substantively, we still have the, the decision to make sort of as a, as a committee, how we want to, to handle this moving forward. So my intention was to not bring this out today, but to have this background sort of in our, in our minds as we consider it in the, in the next committee meeting, so. Counsel LeBoye?
Thank you. Are we going to see what Peter is drafting before we vote on whether we want to adopt this alternative?
Yeah, my intention would be that we would actually vote on the, the language of, of the, the resolution to be proposed to the legislature, yes. So to answer your question, yes. Any other questions? All right, so I will move on to the only piece of business that we have before us today. From the docket of February fourth, twenty twenty-five, I entertain a motion to hold a public hearing on April first, twenty twenty-five for the following, to amend Chapter seven, Section three point five by banning the use of second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides, scars to include bromethaline from use on all city-owned properties, both inside and out.
Second.
Thank you, the motion is in order. This is just to call for the public hearing. Any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, that concludes the business of ordinances, elections, and legislative matters. I move to adjourn at six forty-seven.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you guys ready for me?
Yes.
I guess that's why everybody's staring at me.
Yeah.
Give me one quick second, I'd like to call Public Works to order at six forty-eight. We do have a guest this evening, Mayor Kathleen DeSimone, oh, and Lynn Daven. Sorry, I don't have my glasses on, Lynn. And the mayor here is, is here to give us an update on the water situation and make a couple statements and we can ask her questions. So just keep in mind that, you know, there might be questions she can't answer due to it being administrative issue. But I'm sure she'll let us know if she can't, if there's something she can't answer.
I will.
Is the floor yours, mayor?
Thank you very much, Vice President Dolan. Good evening, everybody, thank you for having me back. I'm basically gonna read to you a statement of the investigation to the water department and the water loss that occurred. I'd like to start by saying to you and to every resident and water customer in the city that this unfortunate, avoidable, and totally unacceptable that this unfortunate, avoidable, and totally unacceptable incident is something that I take extremely seriously, because it involves, as you know, our most important resource, and also because it has damaged the credibility of the water department with the residents, businesses, and the community whom we serve. And on behalf of the water department and the city of Attleboro, I would like to apologize to the Attleboro community. I'm sorry this happened, and I'm sorry it occurred on my watch. I believe in accountability and transparency in government, and although this situation is understandably frustrating and disappointing, I promise you that we are working hard to restore your trust in the water department and to ensure that something like this never happens again. Before I speak to the results of the investigation and planned improvements for water department operations moving forward, and also improvements to training, communications, and work culture, I think it's important to remind the community that there are several overarching priorities in working through these matters. First and foremost now and always is ensuring the safety of our drinking water and increasing our water supply. And as you know, there are a number of important projects happening at the moment that will serve to protect and improve the quality of our drinking water, including the replacement of the ozone system at the West Street plant, which will help us not to do blending again, which is one of the reasons I'm standing here right now. Among other things, once completed, the new ozone treatment will remove the manganese from the water supply and eliminate the need for blending, as I just mentioned. The soon-to-be-completed temporary water treatment plant at Waiting River will remove PFAS from the water process at that plant, as we await construction of the permanent plant in 2027, which will be capable of meeting all drinking water regulations, including those for PFAS, TTHMs, and manganese. Again, one of the reasons this issue occurred is because Waiting River had been shut down for over two years, because it wasn't up to state compliance with the removal of some of these items from the water. We're going to rectify that, not soon enough. As Acting Superintendent Matt Crowde recently informed you, the long-awaited Pawtucket Emergency Water Interconnection will soon be available for use, and although we hope to not need it right away or in the near future, in the event of the emergency, the interconnection will give us access, as you know, to 1 million gallons a day of clean water. And as you all know, this is a project that started back in 2016, so it's a long time coming. Further, we are working to increase both water supply and quality and are exploring the feasibility of dredging at Oars Pond to accomplish these objectives. We are also considering aeration system, which will help reduce the level of manganese in Oars Pond as well, and as we continue to explore options for new and recommissioned ground wells, as well as other ways to increase our water supply. So that is all what we're working on and what's on the horizon. Moving on, fairness, thoroughness, and responsibility are also important matters, which is why, beginning in late November, and as recently as last week, Human Resources Director Lynn Daven and I met individually with several water department staff members as we sought to understand how the water level at Manchester Reservoir came to drop seven feet in seven weeks. We also reviewed documents, including logbooks and other department records. With the exceptions of the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and lavatory staff, all of the water department employees are members of a collective bargaining unit, and the union representative was present at each of these individual meetings. Through these meetings and document review, we learned that shortly after the Manchester Aqueduct was opened on June 9th to commence the blending process, there was concern among staff members about the valve being open too wide in the amount of water flowing from Manchester Reservoir into Oars Pond, excuse me. Because of the high flow of the water from the reservoir, the water level in Oars Pond exceeded its capacity, resulting in water flowing over the dam and downstream. Inexplicably, although these concerns were shared and discussed by staff members with supervisors, and reservoir measurements are and were taken daily, the aqueduct valve was not adjusted until July 21st. When that adjustment was made, the amount of water overflowing from Oars Pond was dramatically reduced, and the rapid reduction in the water level at Manchester Reservoir stopped. As we know, the consequences of the reservoir dropping seven feet from June to July were made worse by the extended drought that began in August and worsened into fall. Now, I know firsthand and otherwise that upon learning of last summer's water loss, the residents and customers are frustrated, disappointed, and looking for perhaps a more pointed explanation as to why and how the situation was able to continue over the course of seven weeks. But all of the questions, conversations, and other information we received indicate, which is what I said weeks ago, that the primary cause of this situation was a department culture that lacked proper leadership, oversight, and training, and communication, all of which were first and foremost the responsibilities of the former assistant superintendent and the former superintendent. Although there are many hardworking and dedicated water department employees, this investigation has made clear that we need to do a better job with training, supervision, and communication of the water department, and Lynn Daven is working with Matt and our consultant Becky McEnroe to put procedures in place to ensure that happens. Additionally, Matt and Becky have begun and will continue a deep dive into all aspects of staff training and licensure, operation systems, workflow processes, and department communications. They are also working to ensure that the ongoing water department capital projects proceed efficiently to completion, and I can tell you that Becky's expertise is proving to be of great value to the water department and the city, and I appreciate the council's approval of the funds to retain her services. Some other improvements include holding weekly department meetings, which were not occurring, revising the water department webpage to provide weekly reservoir measurements and other important information about our water supply, making sure that all water department staff see emails to receive important information and announcements, and first and most important, strike that, and most importantly, working to build a department culture of transparency and accountability. In closing, although it may take some time, I want to assure you and the residents that we are fully committed to hiring the right person for the water superintendent position. That person will have not only the necessary expertise in licensure, but also management experience, professional integrity, vision, communication skills, and the ability to plan, organize, and lead the department in a sustainable, effective, and efficient manner, understanding always that our water supply is our most precious asset. This is what the residents deserve, and this is what we will deliver. And that concludes that statement. So I can take some questions, Vice President Dolan. As you may know, having mentioned that most of the staff there is union, there are some limitations to things that I can and can't speak of, but other than that.
Thank you. I'm thrilled to, before I open it up for questions, I know that President Delisio and I have spoken to you and Lynn extensively, so I don't have any questions myself, because I feel like they've always, they've already been answered, but I'm thrilled about the ozone for West Street, because if we can avoid the blending, and I'm also thrilled about the training, management, supervision, the culture. I think it's a new day, and I think a lot of people have faith in Matt, and I know that he's working overtime, trying to get everything together, so we appreciate that, and I'll open it up for questions if anybody has any questions. President Delisio.
Mayor, thank you for coming down. Thank you for, as Vice President Dolan said, the communication, and I certainly understand the slippery slope of dealing with a unionized environment. The question I have at this point, has the consultant Becky, she talked about ways that we can prevent this sort of thing from occurring again. What sort of oversight do we have, and things of that nature going forward? Because for it to go on for as long as it did, to have a, as, understanding that people were aware of it, how do we, what mechanisms are available to ensure this doesn't happen again?
Thank you, President Delisio. And first, thank you to you and Vice President Dolan. I think we've met maybe three or four times in the last several weeks, because I wanted you to know what was going on, and although I didn't share it with the whole council, and forgive me for that, I at least wanted a couple of the members to be aware. So I appreciate your time and communications, the conversations that we had. President Delisio, you know this, rule one, hire smart, right? We have to be very careful of the people we put in these positions, vetting them across several metrics. One is not only subject matter expertise, right, which is valuable, but if you're going to manage and lead and supervise people, then you need those skills too. And sometimes, I think, we put one over the other, but we seldom get both, right? We've got experts who can't lead, we've got leaders who aren't experts. We need to do both first and forehand. I will tell you, President Delisio, Becky's been there six days?
Seven.
She's working two days a week, so she has, she is there. I don't know that we have the way forward, but I think it became clear to her pretty quickly what the issues are. And I think, again, you know this from your job.
Excuse me.
Changing a culture takes a lot of time. I can tell you that Matt is setting the standard for transparency and accountability. The guy is working about as hard as he could at this job, so I think changes are at least beginning to be seen, but I cannot lay out for you right now like steps one, two, and three, but I can tell you that the consultant is aware and has seen pretty much what we've seen pretty quickly, and that we're moving towards that. But it's going to take time.
Okay.
It's going to take time to change the culture, but job one is hiring smart, we fill that position, and job two is holding people accountable and being more transparent. So I hope that answers your question.
Sure, just a follow-up if I may. So, yeah, so changing culture definitely takes time, and I think one thing that needs to be said is that this isn't representative of the water department in general. There's some great men and women down there that work their tails off and are doing the right thing because it's the right thing to do. I guess what I'd be looking for is kind of along the culture, internal controls, what kind of internal controls are in place.
Yeah.
You talked about, yep, in my day job, I'm trying to change a culture too, and I focus on people, process, technology. So a focus on internal controls, standard operating procedures, what kind of technological innovation do we have to ensure that, you know, if we're losing a certain amount of water, is something going off? And I understand you can't answer that.
No, 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 I can if you, if I may.
Please.
I appreciate the question. The interesting thing, there are controls there, right? The SCADA system is a display on it, so you can pretty much see what's going on in terms of the operations. They are required by law to keep records, so there are records, there are logbooks, there are daily measurements, so there are records being kept. I guess in that regard, President Delisio, I would say there's two fundamental things. Some of the processes are in place.
Yeah.
What is lacking perhaps is communication, right, about what's in the logbooks, about what's on SCADA, right? Like getting people to talk about what it means, like should we be there, those kind of conversations. So you can have the information, but in the absence of conversation and supervision and action, it's just information, right? It doesn't, it doesn't make its own result. So improving the conversations is one thing, and then I completely blanked on the second. Oh, so that's processes, a lot of them there are there. Oh, number two.
Around internal controls.
Internal control, again, I think a lot of those are already there, and Lynn, you can chime if you want, because the state dictates, DEP dictates a whole lot of internal controls, and they can come down and check on those processes. Are you aware, may I ask Lynn a question? Anything in particular she's mentioned in terms of processes?
She's still looking into it.
Yeah, I mean, so I'm sure there's room for improvement, but to give you a specific example, but they do a lot of the record-keeping documentation, the technology is there, and a lot of this is dictated by the state, but again, having it and using it and thinking about it and implementing it and discussing it and using it to teach people about it, right, all also has to happen. So I guess you could say in some ways we might have had information in a vacuum.
Sure.
Which is not, it's not where you want information to be.
Just a follow-up if I may. It's funny you mentioned DEP. Have we heard from DEP? Has there been any sort of communication from the state saying, hey, what's going on here? Or are we kind of, it didn't hit that level of a threshold? And forgive my ignorance on that.
Oh, yeah, no, no, they're aware of everything. I mean, they've been on board since early on when the water, related to our whole water supply system, but they are aware what's happened. I mean, look, this was all in the news, nothing that I'm telling, you know, that, but, but it's my understanding from Matt, I have not talked to DEP directly, but I know that they have talked to Matt, and they're good with where we are moving forward at the moment, so, yeah, but they are aware of everything. I mean, that's all, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel Angelo.
Thank you, Vice President Dolan. Thank you, Mayor D. Simone. I know you've been working hard on this, and thank you for all the communication with the council president and council vice president, so thank you. This might be a crazy question, you might not even be able to answer this, but the one big thing I get is, is this, these ridiculous insane numbers of how much gallons we've lost. Now, I know it's seven feet, and that's really the only way we can judge it, but is there any way to dispel some of these insane numbers for the public to just, okay, it's not 700 million gallons, or it's not whatever, you know, 300 million, or whatever it might be? Or is it just that we know that it's just seven feet and that's it?
Thank you, Counsel Angelo. First of all, I don't, I don't like to engage in rumor. Unfortunately, that seems to be the world that we're living in. I don't do rumor, I prefer facts.
Yeah.
So, no, I don't know of any way by which we could fairly and with some degree of accuracy calculate how many gallons are lost. Seven feet in seven weeks is enough for me. And in light of the drought and everything I've learned since then, any amount of loss is too much loss, right? It is our most precious resource, and the thought of running out kept me up at night. So I don't need any more than that, but in terms of, how do you combat rumors, Counsel Angelo, with facts? With people wanting to seek information and not be in an echo chamber, which is what a lot of us are in, this is the world we're in to some degree? And I will give people the facts the best as I can, I can refer them to Matt, I can send them to Becky, but people have to want the facts and information, but I can't give you an accurate number. I don't even know what purpose it would serve right now. I think seven feet says everything I need to know.
Well, thank you.
Counsel Holmes.
Thank you. So, thank you for coming down. So June 9th to July 21st.
Yes.
Okay. Who finally decided to close the valve?
Well, there were conversations in the notations in the logbook where that some of this was in consultation with the water superintendent. The way I read the June, I'll strike that, July 21st entry, is that the valve was adjusted, and I don't know if you saw this in the logbook, having to do with a lab, something in the lab. So the former superintendent was aware of the valve change on the 21st. I don't know if it was in response to the water issue, or if it's because the lab tech wanted to do something, the lab staff.
Okay.
But it was with her awareness, apparently.
I think that what I'm hoping for, and I think the residents as well, is the accountability piece.
Agreed.
Do you feel that that's been addressed? Because everybody's looking at the logbooks, and it sounds like there's some way to tell what's going on, and so if individuals were flagging this as an issue, I guess, why wasn't it addressed?
I appreciate your question, Counsel Holmes, and I, I know that what I present to you tonight may not be the most satisfying reply, but again, these, these people all work for, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, right? So the conversations were had in the absence of the guidance or direction of their supervisors. It's kind of challenging to hold them to the standard of, well, you should have just went over her head or his head, which is where we are. Moving forward, I think with more communication and transparency, we won't have this situation anymore. You know what I mean? And that may not be the satisfying answer, but that's pretty much where we are right now, so.
Thank you. So I'm also concerned that maybe this isn't just an isolated incident, like is this happening in other departments of the city, or how are we making sure that this is not?
Okay, first of all, respectfully, this is certainly an extreme situation. Again, when you put people in leadership supervisory roles, to some degree, you have to trust them. I do, and you do. I appoint, you confirm. I don't know that any of you have the time to go to any department and see how it's running. I don't. I'm pretty sure you folks don't. So I will say, there's some degree of trust that Chief Hegney knows how to run this department, and I'm not going to go over there and tell him how to do it, right? So again, I have to go back to rule one, which is hire smart. Do I think stuff, I guess so, Counsel Holmes? I think that, nothing to this degree, but I'm hoping this is clearly the exception in the worst-case scenario, and I hope that nothing like this is happening in any other department. I have no reason to think that's the case, but one of the things that I'm trying to do is have more correspondence with my department heads, checking in on them regularly, have open communication, but do we have to put some faith and trust on our experts? Yeah, I don't know how else to do it. I can't run every department, and I, and you folks can't either.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel Thora.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor D. Simone. Can you give us a status report of where we are now? I think that's something that's of importance to all of us.
Thank you, Counsel Thora.
Are we still taking water from Mansfield? Is that over?
Yes, no, I'm sorry.
Please.
Thank you, Counsel Thora. Yes, we're still taking water from Mansfield, hoping to shut that down as soon as possible. We are still pumping into Manchester as much as we can. Our first goal is to get to 142 feet above sea level, with that some degree of comfort. Manchester full, as you folks may know, is 146 feet above sea level, and last I checked, we were on the 139 mark, so we're getting there. We certainly need a lot more precipitation, it takes a lot to fill that pool, so we're working towards it. Mansfield, as I said, is still on, particularly until we have Pawtucket, when that's ready. It's just a very, there's a lot going on here, which I think Matt kind of disclosed to you folks. When we disconnect from Mansfield, we're going to go back to Waiting River alone, which is about 1.6 million gallons a day, so we'll lose, I think we're about 175,000 gallons of Manchester at the moment. But once we unhook that, we go to the current plant, and then we've got a transition to the temporary plant, which is a reduction to 1 million gallons. This is like spinning plates here. So we're on it, I'm on it, to some degree, it's a- as a safety. I want to make sure when we disconnect those holds, Counsel Foa, that we're done. That we're done and ready to move on. And we're good with Waiting River Temporary Treatment Plant. So we're not quite there yet.
If I may, and will you publicly announce when we are disconnected from Manchester?
Sure.
I think that will be.
Oh, you mean from Mansfield?
I'm sorry, yes.
Sure, be happy to, because we weren't paying anymore. So that would be good news too, yes. And it also would signify that we're in a good place.
Right. You said that there is going to be on the water department's website, weekly reservoir readings?
Yeah, actually, we've got the weeklies up there, right?
I believe that.
Yeah, I believe they're already up there.
It's already begun.
Yes. Yes. And, yep, I'm pretty sure the weeklies are already up there. And we've added a lot through the course of this whole thing. One of the things I was doing was adding information to the water department website, right? There wasn't a lot there. We've added a lot, but we just added the weekly measurements. Thank you. Yep.
Counsel Avoy.
Thank you. So I know you kind of mentioned dispelling rumors, but what initially prompted the investigation, or I guess sounded the alarm? I know at one point, there was rumors online. Can you allude to maybe if those were, what kind of sparked the talk, or if there was already alarms going prior to those?
I had first heard this rumor in September, and I asked the assistant superintendent and superintendent about it. And I said, was there anything to do with any kind of valve, any kind of issue with a malfunction of the department? And the answer I received was no. So I moved on. The rumors kind of died down. I can tell you that when we had the public meeting, no one asked that question, right? And then I think part of what happened here, particularly as the water became, as the drought continued, and I started really beating the drum of conserve, 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 I think at the same time, the rumors became more and more elevated, right? I don't do Facebook rumors, so that's not where I'm going to run the city. I won't do it. Not gonna do it. What ultimately drove me to a department meeting on the 21st was I think I had got an email from our friend George here and some other news outlets. And I was like, okay, I'm done with this. I'm done, right? Because now I have to spend time answering George's questions and these questions about the silly rumor. So when Lynn and I went to the department on November 21st, I can tell you, I was just, this is baloney. We gotta stop the rumors. And that's pretty much what I led with. All right, folks? I said, these Facebook rumors are killing our efforts to conserve. They're undermining your credibility. So who's ever doing it, knock it off. Because I thought it was just kind of some, what's the word I'm looking for? Someone who perhaps wasn't happy in the department, right, doing this, to be kind of an instigator and an agitator. But one of the last things I said at the end of that meeting, and this was everybody, every water department member but for night shift, folks, was in the room, my parting words were, and if you know something, and you don't reach out to me or Lynn, you are the problem. And I left, and I thought it was over. I thought I had put to bed the rumors, which I believed to that point to be bogus Facebook baloney. And I left. And I think the day after?
Day of.
The day of, and from the two people?
One, that day, one at home.
The day after that meeting, we heard from one employee, and the next day, we heard from another. And that's when I was like, oh. That's when we went back. And that's when we did individual meetings. And that's when it became clear when it happened. And that's when I changed course and changed tact and changed messaging. But I did dismiss them. They were rumors. I had no credible evidence of what had occurred. And that's what I operate on, because I have to be fair to people. Would any one of you want to be judged by a Facebook rumor? We are, right? We're politicians, I guess, so it comes with the territory. So perhaps not the best example. But it's not really the fairest way, you know? So, but once I had credible evidence, everything shifted. That presented a whole nother challenge. If you want to know, the day of that meeting with the water department was also the last day of the assistant superintendent, which meant I had one person responsible to drive that boat, and all that that means. So there's a lot of other things. And I talked to President Delisi and Vice President Dolan about some of the challenge that I was facing to get where I knew where we needed to be. It took a little longer than I had hoped for. But it's the water department. Someone's gotta have the wheel. So anyway, I'm probably over answering your question, but.
No, thank you. And I just had a brief comment, if I may. I just want to echo that I agree with your hire smart sentiment. And just circling back to, you know, the previous head being rejected by this body before my time, and the forceful emergency measures. So what I hope for out of your leadership is, you know, someone more unanimous coming through this body that kind of brings confidence back to the department. I think that, you know, that set the wrong pace many years ago, and kind of just seemed to keep on path. So I'm really optimistic in your endeavors to find somebody. And hopefully, you know, you keep Counsel Angelo on the loop, and hopefully he supports it as well.
Will do. Right. I think when things are working well, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be contentious, right? If we're doing our jobs, I'm appointing somebody that you guys go like, yep, good, right? If we disagree, then, yeah, there's something else going on that we need to get to. But if we're doing it right, we should be in accord, without question. So I appreciate your point.
Thank you.
Counsel Taviras.
Hello.
So I've been trying to sort of frame this, all of the details surrounding this, my mind, over the last, you know, several weeks. And one of the things that you mentioned just a few minutes ago was lack of communication as an issue at the water department, among other things, and that there's room for improvement. You also mentioned that the concern was raised inside the department at some point. Is it fair to say, so I'm trying to, so I'm saying this out loud as I'm thinking through it, but is it fair to say that in this particular situation, communication wasn't necessarily the issue? Worst-case scenario, failure to act, incompetence, and I'd say maybe best-case scenario, misread of the data? Is that?
Well, there was communication, yes. Yes, there were people talking. So if your point was it wasn't a lack of communication, yes, in this instance, people were talking. But in a broader culture issue, there, I would think it's, the way I understand it, is there's folks here, and there's folks over here, and these groups aren't always necessarily talking. But in this instance, was there communication? Yeah, there were comments and concerns expressed.
Thank you.
Counsel Holmes.
Thank you. So that's why I was bringing up other departments. And I know we've discussed this before, but is there a potential that we should have some sort of hotline or a number where people feel like they can reach out and tell us, like, there's something that's brewing here that needs to be addressed? Because maybe individuals don't feel comfortable coming forward, and we don't want them to feel that way, of course, but this is very serious what happened.
I agree with you, and thank you, Counsel Holmes. You had mentioned that in a conversation we had recently. And I had looked into that a while back for another reason, and I haven't talked to you about it yet, about the idea of having, like, not only for employees, but for, the only problem with that is, though, you gotta think about this. Counsel Holmes is proposing like some kind of fraud hotline, like if you see government waste, which I think is a good idea. I just, I don't want to create other rabbit holes to go down here for complaints, you know, because it could be used for revenge or other more personal means. But I think your suggestion is a good one. Counsel Holmes, we would just have to really think about how to implement it in a way that is fair to all parties, right? Because anybody can launch a grenade, right? So, but I think it's your point, and I have seen it done in a lot of municipalities, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, we just have to figure out how to do it.
Counsel Reynolds.
Well, thank you for coming down, Mayor. I think to go along with the two things around communication is, I do think there was a lot of communication going around. Unfortunately, what I heard was, no, there was nothing going on. And that was from the highest people in the department. Oh, no, everything's fine. Well, if you can't trust that person that's at the top of the department, who do you trust? That was my feeling. And so I asked the question, and I don't know how you would be able to find this out as time goes on, but it probably goes along a little bit with what Counsel Holmes is saying, the integrity of the person that we might hire, or the bullying of the employee by the head of the department. How somehow do we section that out? How do we find that out? How do we allow for people to come forward and tell? Because it is about integrity. It's about the person that's leading the department. They might be the smartest person there. But do they have any integrity? And if they don't, and they really don't care about the city, or they're not paying attention to their employees' needs or wants, or they're in fear of the superintendent, we have issues. I don't care how smart the person is. They could be at the top of their game. It's really become a moral issue that this all occurred over. And I will say that prior administrations allowed it as well. And as much as we fought against it, here we are. And I applaud how hard you're both working to try to straighten the mess out. But I think it comes from a very strong place of integrity. And really, when someone says to you, this is happening, and they say it isn't, you have to really, we're gonna have to delve into it like immediately, because there are so many things that can go wrong, as we have now found out. So I appreciate all the work that's going into changing what's happening and how we're hiring and that kind of thing.
So if I may reply, Counsel Reynolds, you're right. Talking inside the department didn't help us, right? It wasn't till I said that, if you don't say something, you're the problem.
Right.
I think to Lynn's credit, she's doing a very good job building relationships with our staff members, particularly with our collective bargaining members, that if they don't want to tell the soup or the assistant superintendent, they can call Lynn.
Okay.
You know what I mean? If you're concerned about whatever, if you go up the chain, then just reach out to Lynn, right? There's another way to do that. And that's the doors and the relationship that we're kind of establishing. Because I don't know how many other HR directors have been to the water department of late, but I tell you, Lynn's been there quite a number of times. So I think that goes a long way too, is relationships and trust, that the people over at the water department staff trust us on this side to talk to Lynn, or they probably won't come to me, but to reach out. If you're not comfortable speaking with them, then reach out. Because those, you know, those two folks who reached out are the reasons why I'm like, oh, here we are.
Yeah.
So I'm grateful for them.
Yeah, thank you. President Delisi.
May I make a statement and then a question? Thank you. So as I said in one or two of the meetings that we had, to me, it's upsetting that the former superintendent and assistant superintendent get to just walk away. I think this is what's probably one of the more concerning things to me. Instead of facing the music, they're no longer employees. I get it to an extent. Our hands are tied. But as Sarah and Diana and Jonathan were alluding to, I think when we talk about that communication, you're right, we don't have the time to look at, run those departments, because we're part-time legislators. We have our own job, you know? So that would make it definitely difficult. But the question I have is looking, well, if I may, to Diana's point about, Counsel Holmes' point about the ethics line.
Mm-hmm.
I've seen them in several companies I've worked for. There is a value to it, even if it's just internal. So I would advocate for that. Is Becky doing anything in terms of providing guidance and looking ahead to the spring and summer about restrictions? And I mean, I think this, if we have to have another full-on restriction, I think that's gonna be a tough pill for a lot of the water users to have to swallow.
So we haven't really started the restriction conversation, because it's not that time of year. But it is my greatest fear as well. The restrictions will depend on the level of Manchester reservoir.
Yeah.
If we can get back to 146 sometime before the end of March or April, we'll be in a much better spot. If not, then, yeah, it's gonna be a very, very tough call. But desperately hoping for rain. I think we'll get there, but there is a chance. And as you may know, the state had lowered the drought level back to mild and just increased it back up to significant. So we're not out of it, neither us nor a good part of southeastern Mass is out of it yet. But I'm hoping that we get to a level of President Delisi where we don't need them. It depends on Mother Nature.
Yeah, I just don't feel we'd be doing the public any information.
I don't believe, I dread it. I don't want to do that. But I can't say right now.
Anybody else have any questions?
So I just have a comment. So the restrictions seem to be almost inevitable every year. And I know it's not just us. I think it's just where we're going.
What's a DEP permit, Vice President Dolan, right? The water withdrawal permit dictates the annual restrictions, yeah.
Right. But in the sense of weather patterns and the way things are changing, and one quick question, didn't Matt say that we were looking into the wells, like seeing?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we have talked about wells. So as you may know, particularly, the city used to have several ground wells and the works that you need to get the water out into the water treatment plant. Those were all decommissioned when we built the West Street Plant in the 80s. I don't know. They were all decommissioned. There is one still on the West Street Plant property that's ready for use, but we are looking at reestablishing, recommissioning. Some of the old ones are perhaps new. There's a, which would be great, right? Because that's groundwater. But it's not just popping a well. You have to install the works. So there's a cost involved, because the water's gotta come up and get to the plant, which would be the financial impact. So yes, that's also on the table. And particularly when it comes to watering some of the city properties, I think we really need to look into alternatives of not drawing from the city's water supply to water some of our fields. So Christie is exploring wells, maybe near some of the city fields and stuff, because that's a lot of water that we use on our fields. So yes, wells are being considered. But a couple, Counsel Dolan, and they won't come cheap.
Yeah.
But.
They might be worth the investment.
We should have a couple in our pocket.
We'll see what that dollar amount is.
I agree.
Is everybody all set?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay. So I have three motions from the docket of February 18, 2024. I entertain a motion to transfer $1,200 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account citywide supplies, street lighting.
Excuse me?
Second. 2025. I think you might have said 2024.
Did I?
Yeah.
All right. Sorry.
No problem.
I'm still there, I guess. 2025. These are for bulbs for the streetlights. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of February 18, 2025, I entertain a motion to accept the donation of dam removal preliminary design services for Farmer's Pond Dam from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Ecological Restoration. Thank you. So this is for the preliminary design of the Farmer's Pond Dam. Does anybody have any questions? I have all sorts of information here that I can provide to you if you're really interested. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And I have one more. From the docket of February 18, 2025, I move to transfer $4,646.53 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account Public Works Safety Sign Supplies.
Second.
Thank you. This is, the Department of Public Works receives notice from the Massachusetts Department of Labor Standards. They had reviewed across, they had performed the crosswalk safety audit. And I guess some changes need to be implemented, like manned crosswalks. It's supposed to have green signs, warnings going into a school zone, so on and so forth. So they wanted us to upgrade a few things that we have. So that's what this is for. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And that's all we have tonight. I'd like to call for a adjournment at 7:27.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at 7:27. Thank you.
The Traffic and Transportation Committee has no business tonight. We need the next appropriate time.
Deli and Mayor News and System and Ability Committee also does not have any business tonight, and we'll meet at the appropriate time.
I call personnel Veterans Human Services Committee to order at 7:27. Members present, Counsel Taviras and Counsel Waterman. From the docket of February 18, 2025, I entertain a motion to accept a generous donation to the veteran services regarding the donation of $500 in gift cards to Stop &amp; Shop from the VFW, Post Number 150.
Second.
There's Counsel Taviras. Obviously, thank you very much, Stop &amp; Shop. Appreciate that very much yet again. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. For the docket of February 18, 2025, I entertain a motion to approve the following reappointment to position and for terms as indicated. Peter Melo, city solicitor, one year, February 2026. Thank you, Counsel Taviras. Any, Peter's one-year term. Any questions, comments, concerns?
No, I just want to say, I think he's doing a great job.
Yeah. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. For the docket of February 18, 2025, I entertain a motion to approve the following reappointments to positions and for terms as indicated. Randall J. Vincent, Inspector Wyron, three years, February 2028. Laban O'Brien, Alton Inspector Wyron, one year, February 2026. Gary Raisin, Director of Planning and Development, two years, February 2027. Jeffrey Kiefer, Annual Control Officer, Carolyn Eaton, Annual Control Officer, one year, February 2026. Anne Dallin Christensen, Annual Control Officer. Nicholas Wiley, Planner, Conservation Agent, two years, February 2026. Nicholas Wiley, Planner, Conservation Agent, two years, February 2027. Scholar Chance Forrest-Ward, one year, February 2026. Christopher Quinn, Health Officer, one year, February 2026. Kyle Hegney, Chief Hegney, Lockup Keeper, one year, February 2026. Catherine Rigo, Park and Administrator, one year, February 2026. Derek Corsi, Superintendent of Parks and Forestry and Superintendent of Inspector Control, three years, February 2028. Narvi Keyquez Delores, Admiral House Authority, five years, February 2029. Donald Smith, Board of Sessors, three years, February 2028. Jaclyn de Silva, Board of Elections and Commissions, four years, February 2029. Toby Reed, Diane Manjariati, Judith List, Board of Library Trustees, three years, February 2028. Megan Kerr, Board of Park Commissions, five years, 2030. Leo Johnson, Board of Police Commissioners, three years, February 2028. Dee Lockett, Board of Recreation Commission, three years, February 2028. Charles Oliver, Board of Trust Fund Commissioners, three years, February 2028. Edward Stan, Cable Advisory Commission, one year, February 2026. Kevin Smith, James Jones, and Dominic Atoya, Cable Advisory Commission, one year, February 2026. Christopher Lawrence, Cable Advisory Commission, one year, February 2026. Bonnie Moore, Christopher Leon, and Kathy Garapi, Conservation Commission, three years, February 2028. Benton Keane, Stephen Lemay, Ian Daly, Leo Johnson, Constable, one years, February 2026. Raymond Galette, Carolyn O'Connor, Stephen Benson, Counsel and Agent, four years, February 2029. Kimberly Dean, Counsel on Human Rights, three years, February 2028. Tanya Olivera, Cultural Counsel, three years, February 2028. Cynthia Van Vorus, Mary Flaherty, Disability Commission, three years, February 2028. Jeremiah Reposa, Gerald Turcot, Brian Hatch, Blake Reynolds, Historical Commission, three years, February 2028. And Blake Reynolds, Gail Clark, Jason Allard, Andrew Acosta, three years, February 2028. Municipal Building Commission. Bill Beardwood and Peter Fellini, Planning Board, five years, February 2030. Rose Lawson, Redevelopment Authority, five years, February 2030. Kevin Duquette, Sailor of Ways and Measures, three years, February 2028. Scott McDougall and Paul Aspen, Traffic Study Commission, three years, February 2028. Jerry Lynch, Veteran Graves Officer, one year, February 2026. Zachary Fob, Emily Olson, and Braden LaPrade, Youth Commission, three years, February 2028. Sandy Varia and Catherine, I apologize, Ratonstruck, Zoning Board of Appeals, three years for Sandy and two years for Catherine, February 2028 and February 2027, respectively.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Tavoris. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Should we mention that Catherine is associate?
Associate, yeah. Yeah. All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, three, nothing. And that's all for Personnel, Veterans Union Services Committee. A call for a meeting at the next appropriate time. Oh, actually, a call for adjournment.
Second.
At 7:32. Thank you, Counsel Tavoris. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, three, nothing. We are adjourned.
Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee to order at 7:38. I saw Counsel Lavoy and Counsel Angelo, three motions this evening. From the docket of February 18, 2025, I entertain a motion for the closing of such funds and any future grant amendments regarding the receipt of firefighter safety equipment grant from the Department of Fire Services in the amount of $22,793. In accordance with the grant, the fund will be used to procure the following firefighting equipment, hoses, nozzles, valves, hand tools, rapid intervention team equipment, extraction tools, spreaders, cutters, rams, and accessories.
Second.
Thank you. So this is just a grant, and they were able to use it for these items? We don't have to match the grant. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of February 18, 2025, I entertain a motion to transfer $40,000 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to the following, $20,000 to account fire department vehicle maintenance, and $20,000 to account fire department major vehicle repairs.
Second.
Thank you. So in the backup information, this is a little bit concerning, because they have a pretty large budget, and they've gone through it because the fleet is aging so much. So they've already spent $93,000 of the $100,000 allocated for major vehicle repairs, and $70,000 of the $75,000 allotted for vehicle maintenance account. As we recall, when the chief was here, he spoke about the aging, the trucks are aging, and so the repairs are costing more, parts are harder to come by. So at this point, they're asking for the additional $40,000 in those two, so $20,000 in each account. Yeah. We know, I think that, you know, every time we order a truck, we know it's just this timeline just, it gets extended here. So any other questions or comments?
So thank you for your comments, because, you know, we've talked about this for a long time. Not only is it when they're ordering new vehicles, it's a one-to-two, sometimes three-year wait for the vehicles. In terms of the pots, with so many of the OSHA and different public safety standards that change, a lot of the equipment is absolutely, actually obsoleted, and it makes it a lot harder for them to come through this. One thing I appreciate about Chief LeChance is his transparency to this body about what's going on, why, and not just saying, "Hey." And I'd say the same for Chief Hegney as well. So I appreciate your comments, Counsel Holmes.
Thank you. Yes, I completely agree. So to remain competent with OSHA, you have to update everything as often. Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you.
Do we have some idea of whether this is supposed to take us through the end of the
fiscal year?
I can certainly follow up by full counsel. I can reach out to him to ask for the, when it comes to the full counsel, but I still think we should vote it out of committee right now.
I have an objection to that.
Okay. So I will certainly follow up with that and have an answer for you next week. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I have an additional motion. I don't know if everybody has it on theirs, but from the docket of February 18, 2025, I entertain a motion to transfer $16,651.26 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account fire salary wages. Thank you. This is all contractual. So it is a vacation buyback in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement. So something we have to do. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. That's all the business this evening, and I'd like to call for an adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:36.
City Property and Claims has no business this evening and is canceled, and the Finance Committee has no business as well and is also canceled.
I'd like to call to order the License Committee at 7:37. Besides me are Counsel Waters and Holmes. From the docket of January 7, 2025, I entertain a motion to cancel the public hearing for the following, a motion to approve a guard dog application from Zahid Hadir. The dog to be located at 97 Emory Street LLC.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Waterman. Motion's in order. So the, yeah, we couldn't fail to request and pay for the list of abutters to notify the abutters, so therefore, by law, we have to cancel the public hearing, because the abutters have a right to know and voice their concerns. So this is strictly procedural, and this could come back before the body again. Counsel Waterman.
Thank you.
Sorry, Vice President DeLorean, my apologies.
That's okay. Will, I know that there were issues with this dog being on the property previously. One, they did get it licensed, yes?
To my office.
Because I believe it wasn't licensed. And two, do we, do you know if animal control is following up to make sure the dog isn't there daily acting as a dog guard?
So what I can tell you is that I'm not sure from animal control. I share that concern. That was one that I mentioned last week when I saw the rumor of a potential cancellation, and I voiced my concern for that. So regardless, I intend to follow up with animal control and make sure of that. But as of now, I don't have any communication. But again, I share the same concern.
I would agree with you, and I think everybody would appreciate if you did do that, you know?
Absolutely.
Occasional check-in.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Counsel Angelo. Thank you. And Counsel Lavoy, and I know how I feel on this, and I hope this doesn't come back again, because I will be vehemently against any guard dog at a building that's going to be kept outside overnight or anything like that. At this day and age, we have cameras, we have many security systems, and I really don't feel it's necessary to do that. So hopefully, we don't see this again, because I will be pushing hard against it.
With that, if everyone, if any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.